She's good. Call of duty order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Anything to put on the agenda? There's no public comment tonight. The first item then is a super tense report.
So Ray, just wanted to report out, a couple of days ago, we brought our district-wide leadership team together and reviewed with the architects that are hosting the community meetings. And we took the feedback from all of the community meetings and the architects put together some renderings, had the building principals and our leadership team take a look at them, clarify some details. And the whole purpose of the project is to conceptualize the ultimate vision. So really to not limit people's thinking as we've gone through the process back in the fall and then continued through the winter and now the spring. The hard part is now paring down a big vision to prioritize what do we need versus what would be nice to have. And then look at financial resources and what can you do given the parameters. That will be the focus of the April thirteenth meeting from six to eight that the whole community is invited to and we want to get as many people there as possible. It's a session to really prioritize what is important to school corporation and to the community. If you have to build a framework of limited resources, then what gets first priority? And then if things change going down the road into the future, you at least have a plan to now bring next to the table items to discuss. And that's all I have.
Sorry you guys work in libraries. It's nice to see you guys out in the meeting. Um, let's see. Anything for the board? Under regular business consent items, approve the minutes for the meeting held on March tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, all favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Personnel, approve the personnel report dated Thursday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Two.
Second.
Motion is second, all favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. To approve the proposal for the hiring of two temporary summer, twenty twenty-two custodians in grounds positions and increasing the starting wage to twelve dollars an hour.
I'll make the motion.
This is what we got here yourself, right Jason?
Yeah, we just changed it up a little bit from what we've done in the past to entice it more for anybody to apply, mainly students sometimes, to raise the pay to get more people since we're.
So basically it's a raise of the pay is what you're really in here.
Yeah, and we worked the numbers where we had to increase the budget that Davidson had in the past. So we just kind of shortened it up and increased a little bit of the hours.
Motion is second already, all favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Prove the request to create a full-time carpentry teaching position at Wall High School in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year in order to expand their career in the technical education program to include carpentry.
Yeah, so as indicated at the last meeting, we had a lot of students who showed interest in this program and we took that to the teacher discussion meeting and there were no concerns. So we are recommending to add this full-time position. It does come with reimbursement money from the state for career tech.
I was just gonna say that. This position gets paid for itself by having the kids in the program because of how we get funded through the state. This doesn't cost us anything out of our budget. We'll probably make money off it, right Dan?
Probably not the first year, but definitely in the following years, yes. First year is always a startup on it, but we'll probably net out hopefully. Yeah, once enrollment costs come in line.
And we would apply for a waiver to get the high wage reimbursement and so that would really even more money.
Will you have enough kids interested?
We definitely have enough to launch the program. And if this is approved tonight, we may even circle back around and see if we can look at some of those upperclassmen who might want to double up on a class. And if that happens, then we can develop even out another section and maybe add more, get more money.
So vote.
I'll second.
Vote is a second, all further discussion, all favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. For approve the request to create a half-time human services teaching position at Wall High School for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year in order to expand this CTE education program to include human services.
Yeah, so this is a pathway that the high school currently does not have. It's a pathway that's a high wage reimbursement. It is a pathway that is in high demand in our society with counseling and social workers. And so we do have enough students that we can create a half-time position. And the idea would be to get the program launched and with hopes that it would become a full-time, halfwayed position for the future.
Just to see if the younger kids can get into it by now.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, all favor signify by say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. The next item is presentation of elementary grading and recording.
That's me.
Right.
Give one moment if you will.
This has been a controversial issue over the years. This is about our third try to get it right, I guess, or?
Well, and today I'm kind of doing a little bit more of just information sharing. I know that we have new board members who weren't here when we originally wiped through it. And it's kind of just about sharing a little bit about the logic, the reason behind the current system that's in place and talking about future opportunities as well. We will have a follow-up to this as we get closer to the summer. There's still continued conversations happening with the teachers as we try to make sure that the role is out in the best interest of our staff, but also of our families and our students as well. So the subtitle here you'll see is a review of standards-based grading practices. And many of our board members here have had students who have gone through our elementary schools and know that even dating back to when I was a student at elementary school, they look a little bit differently than report cards when you get to the middle school and high school. That's kind of what we're most used to because it was the last schooling that we had. There were days and ages of like VGs and Ss and S pluses and pros and amps. There's been all kinds of things that have been there at the heart of standard-based rating. We want to talk a little bit about like why that is a system in place that can have great advantage to our teaching staff as they work with each other, but also as we best communicate to our families. So dating back to even before the pandemic, so fall of twenty nineteen, a committee came together of elementary teachers, secondary teachers and administrators, which we called the Grading Practices and Reporting Committee. We really wanted to circle back on like purpose and intent. Our teachers spend a tremendous amount of time grading and reporting on how students are achieving. And if we don't have that audience and that communication and we're not reaching the outcome that's desired by dedicating that time, we need to step back and evaluate our practices. So as a part of that, we looked at best practices with articles, books, studies, other schools, our current practices as well, in addition to the outcomes that we desire as a school corporation. One of the results of that committee, and it came right before March of twenty twenty, when we shut down for the pandemic, was a statement that really established our purpose of grading and reporting, like the why. Why do we dedicate this and what is our intended outcome? So it reads, "We ensure timely communication to students and families that accurately reflects students' academic and behavioral achievements and growth over time while informing areas of strength and opportunities for improvement." It's a lot in that statement. But I think the key concepts there is like timely communication, regular, consistent updates. And that communication is not just teacher to student, teacher to families. We have to put value on teacher to teacher as grade level colleagues. So when we think about like that vertical alignment, that horizontal alignment, some of the communication that's really important in a timely sense is the way that our teachers can talk to each other and best prepare for the kids that they are going to inherit or the kids that they share and work with throughout the day. We talked a little bit earlier tonight about strategic planning and something that we're going to share with our community members later. And two of the things that we value in that are achievement and growth over time. This adds that behavioral component. Because we know that our schools are doing more than just teaching content. We're giving them those skills, the non-cognitive skills that are going to help them to be successful as well. There's a really strong connection there. If you think back to a board presentation where we talked about that Indiana GPS model and we saw the different buckets by which Indiana is now going to be showing at the local level how schools are achieving in areas like communication, citizenship, beyond the academics, work ethic, mindset. That's where we want to make sure that we're giving a full, well-rounded portrait of who these children are beyond just a letter grade. How do they walk into class? How do they perform? What is that work ethic? So that's where that statement came from. Oftentimes, because it's the most recent that we know, we think of a blended approach to grades. Meaning that I've got some homework, I've got some quizzes, I've got some tests, I've got some projects. All of them have different point values. I dump them into a blender, I blend it up and outturns in eighty-six percent. And to a parent, myself included, it's like what does that eighty-six percent really say about my child? Now, in many cases, we are kind of restricted, like for colleges, for scholarships, for admissions into programs, they want a GPA, they want a letter grade. So we're forced to make sure that we give that. But when it comes right down to it, if we want to paint the most accurate portrait of what students are able to do and how they've grown over time, we need to see what are the factors that go into that letter grade that comes out. At the previous presentation, we talked about five different learner outcomes at the middle school and the high school. Those included knowledge and thinking, which was content acquisition, oral communications and speaking skills, written communication, one of those key literacy skills, collaboration, our ability to work together, and agency, which had some of those components of mindset, advocacy, work ethic. We are able to break down how the students perform in each of those five buckets at the secondary level. So even though we have to blend it to get a grade, we're still valuing it tri-creek that we can see where individual areas of strength and opportunities for improvement are. A good example that I got, I heard someone speak from Purdue University talking about the stacks of transcripts of applicants they get. In a very traditional model, you see a lot of very high GPA students, three point seven five, three point eight two, four point oh. And for that, a lot of those kids look the same. What some schools are looking at is what can I say about those other non-cognitive skills that would maybe set them aside from their peers? So yes, this student has a three point seven five GPA, but if there's an additional metric in there that says work ethic and there are four out of four on a scale and says that versus another kid that has the same and maybe has a one or a two out of four on that, you're going to set yourself aside by the way that you show up to class for those other soft skills. And this representative from Purdue University said there may be a change where they're starting to look for more comprehensive reporting of how kids are performing in schools. All of this gets me back to kind of elementary school. They don't have transcripts, they don't have scholarships, they're not getting into college in third grade. Our rule is when we think about that outcome of timely communication and representing behaviors and achievements of growth over time, we have the flexibility to best do that within our teaching community of educators, but also to our families as well. Imagine if we could hit those different outcomes in a way that if I've got my third grade colleagues to my right here and we could see in all of our major unit assessments where each of those prioritized standards are identified individually by question, we could see all of those that the kids are doing especially well at. We can see those where our kids are struggling with. And we can work as a team and say, what can we do to address that deficiency, that opportunity for growth? Or on the flip side, celebrate the things that they're doing especially well as validation of a good, strong, viable curriculum. In the same sense, a part of that is the way that we push out to our parents. If I'm a parent, I want to know what's my student learning and how they're doing. I polled in the winter, and I saw Don Johansson's back there, so the reference. I said this to all of the teachers and they kind of nodded their heads. I met with all of our teachers across the district, a hundred percent of K through five teachers on three days. I pulled data on winter report cards, so quarter two report cards from Skyward because we can see what parents access them or don't access them. Of every K through five family, twenty-two percent access the report card as is. Twenty-two percent. So sixty-eight percent of our population didn't even open. Now, that obviously brings us a question of like why? Obviously, there's that value added. They're learning from their teachers through communication, how they're doing. But clearly, the report card in its current iteration doesn't bring that value added. So what types of things can we do to revisit that purpose and better meet the teacher community needs and those needs of our families? This first one is about our educators. So Jay, am I allowed to stand for a moment? So for our educators, with the tool that we're currently putting in place, and it's one that we adopted back in the spring of twenty twenty-one, it's the pairing of Canvas and Mastery Connect. Our teachers will have the ability for each of their students to see by standard on any given assessment that hits those priority standards, how they're doing. Obviously, if you see a whole roll of almost entirely blue, exceeding mastery, mastery, those kids have that concept. They've shown mastery consistently across the board. And if I've got some kids that don't, I can help them. If I see others where it's a little bit more of a mixed bag, where we've got more remediation and more of those near mastery, that's a skill that I can circle back to and teach. So if I'm with my third grade colleagues and I can pull that up after giving a unit test that looked at each of those different standards, I can sit down as my professional learning community and have a very good intentional conversation about what they're getting and what they need additional assistance with. And if this wasn't just a picture, I could continue to scroll through the entirety of the year. Because this would be one unit assessment, there would be a second one, my third one, and on down the line. So we could see that over time. Again, the idea is how do we give them so that they don't have to manually create that or manually calculate that? How can we put that into a system, which Mastery Connect does, so that we can leverage that technology and that data collection to make even better instructional decisions and better value their time and use their expertise in what they're best at? So this is kind of a teacher view of what they would see as we go through this program that we adopted last spring. From a parent's perspective, I know that the font is kind of small there, but we're considering timely communication. The current report card as it is does have standards and it does speak to some skills, but not at any type of micro level of like my student can count by tens. Or as this one shows, can add and subtract multi-digit whole numbers literally. What a parent or a student can see is that over time, each of these is something that my child is working on. And if I want to know how they're performing on a given skill, I know that this student here, solving real-world problems with addition and subtraction of multi-hole digit numbers, they're near mastering. They haven't got it yet. There's an opportunity there. So as a parent, I'm better informed of what's happening on those major unit assessments throughout the course of a school year. And in a friendly graphic over here, it's going to take some educating and I'm going to talk to the board about this in the summer. Somebody might say sixty-eight percent, D plus. Right? Because we're thinking of that system where we have to blend it all together and just turn on a number. But in fact, this is a wonderful portrait of a student. Because this was taken about two-thirds of the way through this school year. And what that tells me is that of every standard in this grade, my child has mastered sixty-eight percent of them already, which is about right on pace because at the end of the year, the goal is a hundred percent mastery of a hundred percent of kids. That means for all those prioritized standards, I've mastered all of them and I'm ready to move on to that next grade level. Our goal would always be to get them to a hundred. Now, you guys know as well, as the audience knows, that not every kid is going to reach that. But with that data, we can talk about the teacher that they're going into for the next school year. What did they struggle with? What were those skills that they didn't master in second grade and they went into third grade? And we can then leverage that again to make good instructional choices about how we fill that gap and get them as close to a hundred percent as possible. And this is the type of a view that a student would be able to see. This is the type of a view that a parent would be able to see. So a part of this plan was always at the end of the summer as we get into August and we leverage parent-teacher conferences, community meetings, every opportunity we have to one day tell the parents about what this is. As soon as we're ready to roll out a report that looks like this, we have a lot of work to do to inform parents of what it is. So where we're at right now is talking with teachers about what that timeline looks like. When will it be ready for us to push that out to parents? Because right now, we're just using it locally with our teachers. So we want to make sure that the teachers are comfortable with it first before we open it up to the public. So it is going to help us as they learn and we continue to offer training and we get the opportunity to see really how that data gets populated, to make good instructional decisions. The next step when we're there would be to talking about the communication with our families. So it kind of all goes back to these learner outcomes that we build upon, making sure that we're representing at the individual level what you can do, what you need assistance with, where you are. And as they transition from fifth grade up into the middle school, they start to get assessed on things like written communication, collaboration, oral communication and agency. Then we've got the micro level, that standards-based philosophy carries up with them. And we're still giving feedback on students, not just in the blended approach, but in a more unified approach for individual specific cognitive and non-cognitive skills. So I kind of end with this again as a reminder of where we began because I think it's always important to consider your purpose whenever you make those changes. The journey we've taken since the fall of twenty nineteen to where we are now in the spring of twenty-two, we're not complete yet. We're still kind of in the middle of it. But the future is very bright for better equipping our teachers with the data needed to see how our students are achieving and growing, but also encourage more than twenty-two percent of our families to access our report card so they know what their students are learning, how they're achieving and how they're growing over time as well. So that's the ultimate vision behind this. And because I was asked by a couple of board members after that secondary presentation to speak to this a little bit, that's where this presentation came from. But I do want to say that because we're still in the middle of that plan, I want to come back and talk more after we get through this school year and talk about next phases. Any questions from the board members?
The idea was good, I think it really could help the teacher.
It's absolutely, absolutely. And it's a mindset shift because even for us, the last recollections we have from schooling, whether it be collegiate high school, whatever, is A, B, C, D, F. Right? So even as parents, we kind of think, but that's easy, I get that, I know that. But if we can really help to educate in the future of like why at the elementary level it's good to see those skills and how they're doing in individual skills and what a better picture that is of student learning, we can get them to see that. There will be value added, they will go into it, it'll be better communication in addition to reaching that outcome of what we do in several classrooms in our schools too.
This item on the agenda is under buildings and grounds. Accept the recommendation to reject all builds for Lake Prairie Elementary School HVAC and LED renovations as the all costs exceed the budget paid up.
Yes, okay, so we have unprecedented situation here. And I've got a team here to help me as well to back up any questions or anything because this is really unusual. I've never come to a school board and asked to reject the bids and start over because we didn't have enough money to actually fund the project. I want to remind you of this project. This is Lake Prairie Elementary, this is our HVAC system. We were going to mirror what we've done both at our Oak Hill and our Three Creeks Elementary. And we also added LED to that project back in December. The board gave us the blessing to go ahead and said, as long as we're opening up the ceiling, let's also add LED to that. So timeline wise, we started this in like October of twenty-one. We decided to issue bonds for this. We developed a budget at that time with our consultants. I've got Joe Cash here from Billy's Engineering who helped us write the specs for this. I also have Tom Kuhn and Jeff Neffawati here from CSK Architects as well. So that's our team here that helped us develop our plans and design for this. Early on, we were advised by our team, you better get a jump on this. A lot of people are doing HVAC and we need to issue quick if we want to do this in the summer of twenty twenty-two. So we came to the board and asked if we could do a pre-purchase agreement on the chiller and the air handlers. So we went out to bid, received bids and you approved bids for us to pre-purchase, which is unusual because we normally build it into the project and it's part of the mechanical end of design. So we pre-purchased the chiller so that we could get a line of production and get that stuff moving. A lot of other schools, a lot of other municipalities are upgrading their HVAC this time. A lot of grant money out there to do this, S R funds. We chose to drive our grant funds or S R funds more closer to the classroom. Not that HVAC isn't in the classroom, but we had the capacity to actually issue our bonds to support this. But other school districts are also doing that right now and doing their HVAC bidding process at this point. We tried to get a jump on it, we pre-purchased. In December, in January, we added that LED scope. We received bids and you guys approved that HVAC carrier award here. So our bond was set for three point five million. That included our budget that we had here from our consultants for about five hundred and fifty thousand for the LED and then roughly a little bit over two million for our HVAC project. That left us about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for other miscellaneous projects within our district here. We're going to do, and we still will do, our fire alarms. We had our chiller pumps at the high school, we had a track recoding here. We had, what else do we have here? I forgot.
Sound system.
Sound system, yep, the sound system, definitely. And then our PA system here within this building. So we had those items as well built into this. In February, we went out to bid, we received bids on March seventeenth here. And again, our building, our budget was around three million for this project and the bids, the low bid came in at four million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. A lot higher than what we actually raised and closed at our bonds. We issued three point five million. After diving into the numbers, the team took a look at it. A lot of it was from general construction and temporary protection. A lot of prime rates being built into this to cover the labor and cover the demand that's out there right now so that they could secure workforce for either weekends, nights or around the clock because crews are working around the clock, as well as like the temporary protection end of it all. We put plywood down on the floor in order to protect our carpeting and everything. And plywood costs a lot more to do that. So that's just one example. Ceiling tiles came in a little bit higher too. There's a supply and demand issue, supply chain issue going on there. So in general, it blew our budget out of the water about one point five million dollars. And just to give you some perspective, we, again, I said, we completed this project in both Oak Hill and Three Creeks, but we also had other items within those bids. And like most recently at Three Creeks, we had HVAC done, no boilers at all in that project. We did go to CoolSense, we did LED lighting, ceiling tiles were replaced throughout and we added four classrooms onto that building and we did concrete repair to sidewalks. The bids were received in twenty nineteen, we finished that project in twenty twenty. That was for a total price tag of four point three million for that entire project. Again, we received for only chillers and our boilers here at Lake Prairie and it was four point, nearly six million dollars as well. So quite a different market than what it was back then. So we put our heads together as a team and worked pretty hard since St. Patrick's Day when we received those bids and trying to figure out what we could do because we do need to replace that system. It's twenty years old. And our big, major concern is boilers because we don't want pipes to freeze in the winter and that's, that's more difficult to handle than cooling the building itself. So we're able to, the answer that we came up with is to rebid this project and take out some of the extras that were driving the project a little bit up. LED lighting, we're going to pause on that and we're not going to include it in our new rebid that I'm going to recommend. The other component is the CoolSense units, we're going to wait on that as well. So it won't be the same as both Three Creeks and Oak Hill, but it'll definitely work in a similar fashion. We'll be able to tie in the unit that we actually ordered, our chiller, into the system. We'll be able to tie in the unit that we actually ordered, our chiller, into the system. We'll be able to order boilers and upgrade the boilers. We'll be able to do it on a timeline that fits our early fall. So we'll do our boilers first because there's a quick turnaround with those. We can get those, what did you say, six weeks?
About six weeks.
Yep, about six weeks. So from the time we awarded bids, we can have boilers here. We can install those in August. And then we can do our chillers in October. We'll run the chillers that we currently have through the season. We'll flip over in October. Hopefully we'll have some cooler days and that's hopefully one where not so much will be in the, in the heat there. So the total cost estimate of that project to tie into our old system would be about $1.4 million. The remaining funds, the 1.6 million that I had earmarked on top of that, because again, we had $3 million for this project. We can sit on that and complete those components, the LED and the CoolSense conversion. We can do that the following summer when we have other projects going on in that building. This pausing will cause us to have to store our air handlers. And we will have storage, we've got pricing on storage containers. We also have, we have to have a crane to move these things. So we have to store those units for probably about six months onsite somewhere here. And so we checked into that. We've got pricing on that. But the cost that's involved with that is much less than the price increases on these units that are expected. Right now, Carrier is increasing prices seven to 10%.
Twenty percent.
Are you kidding? Twenty percent, no?
By the time that it would bid next year, it would be, they're issuing about 20%.
And again, there are $364,000, so that would be 70 grand plus, you know, that we'd have to pay for it. The storage fees would be in the range of about $15,000 to $17,000.
Dana?
Yep.
I think combined in containers for about $2,000, $3,000.
We were, we could look into that if they're.
Yeah, you can buy them. They're pretty cheap.
Yeah, we need about five of them.
Yeah, we need about five of them, 40 quarters.
Am I right?
Yeah, you can even, you can rent two of them.
Yeah, but.
So would you rent them?
Why waste the money on rent when you could always use them?
You could purchase them.
That's true. That's another option.
Yeah, you can take a look at that.
We got plenty of grounds, so.
Right.
Jason could even use them.
Yeah, you can take a look at that. Anything else to add to this, guys? Did I?
No, you did a stellar job. Thank you very much. The only other, the only other thing is that, you know, you have, we have to keep that contract that we already awarded on the acquisition.
Yes.
So that's $364,000.
So we're keeping, yes. We're not going to pause anything on the order of the chiller. So we've got that. We had up until April 14th, we canceled. But there's no reason to, so we'll keep it because otherwise if we cancel, we're going to have to reorder and we'll risk the 20% increase. So you have two action items on here tonight. The first one is to reject the bids as we presented them in the other place. And then we're asking to go out. The second recommendation here is to bid a new project for completion in early fall of 2022 that includes boiler acquisition, boiler install, new pumps and chiller install. This would not include the LED, like I said, and the CoolSense system at this time. The chiller and the boiler would be tied into the existing systems with new controllers. And the CoolSense units would be added at a later time with LED.
You said that a lot of the cost is the construction. Is that the labor? The labor went up that much?
Yeah.
Joe.
The labor, yes. Yes, because there are, as Dana was saying, everyone, a lot of people are doing H VAC upgrades right now. So the amount of labor is.
They're digging that money.
Yes.
Just like the petroleum, not.
I would say about a 25% premium time.
No kidding?
Yes.
And what Tom had talked about is a lot of places are raising a lot of the prices on things to recover from COVID.
Yeah.
To kind of supplement what the money they lost.
I wish there's still labor.
And again, I want to bring it back to the fact that you guys authorized, you allowed us to go to bond for this, which in my mind is cheaper than what a lot of other school districts are doing right now since they're using S R money that could be used on the classroom. And you guys are using it, you know, you've given it, granted us the ability to use that money to fund staffing and needs that we have in the classroom. And you allowed us to use the bonding capacity that we have where other school districts are just using this S R money to fund projects like this so that they can get improvements that they probably should have been doing it as a line. Obviously, we were thinking about this over the last couple of years because we completed Oak Hill and we completed Three Creeks. This was just next on the list. And we stayed the course. We didn't use the grant money in a fashion like other school districts are doing or other municipalities. So it's great that we stayed the course and that we held true to our values of driving those dollars to the classroom in that fashion.
So the labor and ability process won't really cost us anything as far as timeline in the end, is it? Can I assume that?
It's kind of unpredictable what the, you know, the cost of the CoolSense is going to be, LED lighting.
I'm not so worried about the cost. I'm more worried about the timeline.
The timeline, we should be able to beat.
And who knows where the market will be then for labor. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll, we'll come out ahead this time. We'll see.
We'll see.
Hope the wood prices go down.
Yes.
Excellent. Motion, motion, I am on one here.
Still move?
I'll second.
Motion's second, all favor certified by, I say aye.
Aye.
Both say. Part of that is approve recommendation to bid a new project for completion in the early fall of 2020. That includes boiler acquisition, boiler install, new pumps and chiller installation at Lake Prairie Elementary School.
I'll be motion.
Second.
Motion's second, make a discussion, all favor certified by, I say aye.
Aye.
Both say.
Mr. President, make a few comments.
Sure.
I just wanted to say thanks to Joe, Jason, Tom, Jeff and Dana. We met first thing on Monday morning and really was just laser light focused on a solution. Let's figure out how to get work through this. We had a lot of back and forth, several meetings there, email threads, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Turf Tank GPS line marking robot presentation. So we're trying to bring new technology to setting up our football field. So first I want to introduce our grounds team, Mark Sampson, who's the grounds foreman, Anthony Valdez and Robbie Spentana. So if you ever never set up a field, it's very labor intensive. Stringing and painting. Robbie's the really one that actually kind of hooked us onto this. And he first came to me and he said, hey, we found a robot to paint lines. I laughed. And then he talked to Mark and they set up a demo. And the rope, they brought the robot out and did a demo for the guys. And then Mark comes back and says, you need to look at this. This, this is, this is a fantastic idea. So kudos to the guys for finding this and bringing it up and getting the demo lined up to do the fields. So it really starts with just a 50-pound robot. And when you put the paint in it, it equals maybe 75 pounds, I think. So about 75 pounds for robots, all GPS. It's, it's very interesting and we'll play a short video so you can kind of get the basis of it.
Turf Tank One is an autonomous line marking robot designed to mark all types of sports fields without the need for a manual operator. The Turf Tank GPS paint robot enables organizations to save time and money by reducing paint consumption and maximizing labor resources. Turf Tank One comes with a smart tab that lets you control the robot by just tapping a few buttons. The dedicated intuitive app is easy to understand and navigate, allowing a quick setup in under 30 seconds. After you launch the roof planning, the robot will drive directly to the starting point and begin painting. Because of its autonomous design, Turf Tank One eliminates the need for a manual operator so you can set up the little work while you can focus on other important tasks. Due to its advanced GPS technology, the robot easily measures, maps the field and draws the lines all by itself. And it can get a field ready seven times faster than any other traditional line marking methods. Getting those lines to be perfectly straight is a real struggle you're trying to break out. But the Turf Tank base station ensures unmatched precision and reliability. With this GPS system, Turf Tank One can draw precise line with an accuracy of plus two minus one standard meter every time. It memorizes all of the locations and roof plans from the initial marking, making over marking 100% accurate. Turf Tank One is equipped with a low-pressure paint pump and nozzle system which reduces your paint consumption on an average of 50% or more. Turf Tank One's hardware and software platforms are designed to perform consistent and accurate line marking on both natural grass and artificial surfaces for all types of athletic sports, including American football, soccer, baseball and lacrosse. You can choose between 45 different field types and nearly 10,000 options. Turf Tank One can make your life as a turf manager easier. It can help your organization save time, money and resources.
So unfortunately, they won't be sitting like that drinking coffee. They'll be going and doing other things that why it takes three guys to get the football field ready. As they set this robot up, they're free to go do a bunch of other things that, you know, need to get done for game night. So if you want to go next. So this is kind of on, on your left-hand side over there. That's the middle school and this is the high school. So the robot can paint every one of those areas by just a push of a button. It even can do the batter's box for baseball, foul lines. It does, it does all.
Not to mention discus arcs.
Discus arcs. So they, they, when we met with Josh from Turf Tank, it, it has a thousand different combinations of how, what field you want to paint. So like after you paint the football field, if you just need to do the hash marks and nothing else, you just tell the robot, just do the hash marks. And it will just go do the hash marks or whatever you think on the field needs to be done. So my biggest issue is we know, and well, we play football hard and we tear up our field pretty good, right? So even when we do it, it's hard to keep the lines perfectly straight. So this is, if you can see right here, this is when somebody painted it on the faded one and the robot did the one that's bright. So it keeps it, it self-levels itself out as it hits rough terrain. And it'll go slow over that area that it knows is a rough spot or if it's muddy. So it gets that perfect straight look. So this is, just shows the versatility of the robot. It can do batter's box and then go do a number for a football field.
Paints the numbers too.
It paints the numbers too. He did say.
It'll do in zone.
Letters.
Letters. Red double, white double.
Yep.
Which they don't currently do.
It does have like rest care awareness month. If you want to, it can spray the ribbon in the middle. It can do all kinds of those things.
If we host a tournament game, it could put I S A, I S A logo, you know, whatever.
They just, Josh did say from Turf Tank though, if you do the numbers and you like them filled in, probably just do it yourself, not because the robot can't. It'd just be a lot quicker for you to, and save paint from the robot. So this is kind of a cost savings that they usually put together. So for like your football field, it takes 20 hours to set it up when you have guys do it. With the Turf Tank, it's three hours. And it keeps going. And then there's a savings versus what the Turf Tank costs. So it takes about $4,640 to set it up and $1,196 to do with the Turf Tank. Turf Tank does come with its own paint, so we don't have to go out and purchase paint anymore. When we would go out and purchase paint, it could run nowadays, it can go up to about four grand for us just to buy the paint to keep up with the fields. And sometimes we'd have to go back and get more depending on how much rain we get or if there's more games because we're going to Terminus. So I broke it down, time spent painting all our fields, 10 times up the whole high school list. So it's baseball, football, the discus. It takes about 112 hours with our current process to do all that. With the guys lining the fields and stringing them, it'd only take 10 hours for the Turf Tank. And then so that's of course 102-hour difference. The paint consumption, it's, since it's a low pressure, it does not use as much paint as our lasers do, which takes about five gallons. Mark, as you said, how much per gallon, five gallons for a football field?
Right now, it's running about 80 bucks for five gallons.
So it takes us about three and a half, 400, four buckets of five gallons to paint the football field once. So, and then of course, the Turf Tank, so the other savings is time, 2,000 and paint, 2,000. So that's a 5,000 savings for these guys a year on what they do on the fields. It's pretty interesting. I was worried about it. So when the salesman came, Mark was there and I grilled him like, okay, what if it's cloudy? What if it's raining? You know, what do we have to worry about on our end? So with Turf Tank, all we have to worry about is make sure we clean out the pump and charge batteries. If it comes into any issues with that, after that, they come out and they inspect the robot.
You rent it or buy it?
We currently, it's kind of like a lease. It's like a lease. We lease it from them. I did call Andrea.
Yep.
Yep. They are the closest school to us that use it. And I talked to their buildings and grounds guy and he's like, that was the best decision we ever made. Because it saves the guys' time. And so like if they're running behind, they just do the field and then they can go out and set up anything we need. And on the tablet, it'll tell you if it runs out of paint. If there's an issue, you need to come look at it if it gets stuck somewhere. So we, I grilled the salesman pretty hard because I was on edge about, you know, bringing a robot to do fields. Kind of seems weird, but with technology nowadays, I mean, anything's possible now. I mean, so. So there's my Turf Tank presentation. Any questions?
So what do you want to hear from us?
I just wanted you to see the thing that we're bringing in.
Well, that's great.
Upgrade us and try to move us forward and save some time and money and get our fields looking in a more pristine manner with this robot while these guys go out and do some other things.
You're fitting this into your budget or else?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, you'll have fun.
It'll save money and increase the productivity as well.
I'm sure we can find other uses for the money.
So basically, yeah, and what you look at is it's a part-time employee. You don't have to pay benefits for it. You know what I mean? Like you don't have to worry about workers' comp.
Yeah.
You know, or complaining it's too hot.
Which one of the three of you initially was introduced to it?
Robbie was the first.
How did you find out about it?
Now, I think I just saw a video on Twitter. It was from Andrea. And I thought it was pretty interesting. So I actually looked it up and found the website.
It was a real fitting.
Yeah.
He brought it to me and I, I spent 37 years in the turf and oil and metal sales business. So I've seen every snake oil, yeah, just coming down the line. And when Robbie brought it to me, I'd seen it work, you know, I'd been worn season turf, pre-mature grass was cut real short. I said, oh, probably pretty good. In that, in those areas, but. And then we kept talking about, talking about. And he's like, Andrea, you know, because Robbie's a volunteer coach of the football team and, and he was up there on their field and he saw me. He says, he has a pretty good job. So we finally set up the demonstration out here at the middle school field. And boy, had we sold about 10 minutes. It's fantastic.
Yeah. So I just wanted to show you how we're trying to move forward in the ground.
Clearly, it's a women's race.
Well, we, we planned on when we get it all set up, when Turf Tank comes out and they're going to set everything up. And you guys, we want to let everybody know to come and watch the crazy robot paint the field, right?
You have, you have to set, each field has to be, has to have its own individual. Where you put your GPS on it and you start to go. Areas at the high school, we can set up three fields at a time. It's just going to be un-destructible like here at the middle school.
You can move from one field to another, but it's without this.
You can just send it to the practice football field, practice football field, softball.
Yeah.
Long spaces.
Yeah.
It'll cruise right over, yeah?
Because it's all GPS. So once they set it up, they'll tell the robot where each field it is and you just hit the button and it knows right where to go.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, it's a, the farmers, now this is a few years back. They got GPS on their combine and platters. They just plug it in and they ain't got to steer the damn thing.
Yeah, it's going to be having the truck along. Kind of same concept, you know?
Yeah.
Very good. Thanks, Jason. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that.
Well, I, while they're here, I just want to thank the crew because, I mean, this reman crew here maintains all of our grounds throughout. Incredible how much acreage they actually cover. And this is going to be a big help. So thanks for thinking outside of the box on this one. Coming up.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You guys are pretty dope, you want.
Just a few more eyes.
That's what I want to watch.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
The next item is the approved initiation of esports extra-competitive clubs at both Lowell Middle School and Lowell High School. Jay?
Yes, I thank you to the board at a previous meeting for allowing me to do a presentation on esports. We're really excited about the opportunity to bring this program to. We're really excited about the opportunity to bring this program to our schools. We did receive all the necessary permissions from the middle school and high school principals. I went through the process of trying to get a extracurricular program set up, so it has that paperwork and it has made its way and looks like it is ready for you to be into it.
You're going to be working with these with these this club, Jay?
I will, although I am not allowed to actually coach as part of it, but I will be working with our eventual coaches. I've already actually had some students reach out because they've heard it's coming and they're very excited, they want to know when we're going to start. So the hope is.
When are we going to start?
Well, very quickly here, we're hoping to get our clubs established so that we can start informally kind of building that. I've actually identified some potential coaches through Mr. Wathan, he has family member that's interested in working with us. And I've also been meeting with some of our teachers at the high school. And they've actually been brainstorming how they can, I think it's three or four teachers can split the duties to be able to see this get off the ground. They're they're really committed to it. So that's our first step and then hopefully I'll be able to come back in the future with a a P D C A position.
So, Moon.
I'll second.
Would you second any further discussion, all in favor of saying goodbye, I say aye.
Aye.
Let's both say it. Number two, approval Lowell High School's study curriculum request to Germany and Switzerland during the spring break two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, so we have had an informational meeting and fifty-two students have signed up or expressed their interest. So the trip is to Germany and Switzerland for a year from now during the two thousand twenty-three spring break. And the cost is approximately three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for students. That does include insurance for whatever reason the trip might be canceled and.
Really pretty good price.
They, if they signed up during the informational meeting, they saved two hundred dollars and the price of trip goes up in April.
They can handle that many kids?
Yes, they can, so they'll either end up with having two buses over there or if some kids end up not following through, though, looks like there'll definitely be one full bus.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Option second, any further discussion, all in favor of saying goodbye, I say aye.
Aye.
Let's both say it. And number three, accepted donation from Circle Tool of Indiana in the form of cranking wheels valued at eighteen hundred and fifty dollars to support a Lowell High School welding program. So, Moon.
Second.
Option second, all in favor of saying goodbye, I say aye.
Aye.
Let's both say it. Under other information, Dana, I think you're on this, a proposed software conversion for district financial payroll and extracurricular accounts.
This is just a quick update that I'll be coming to you with a recommendation from April. This is a long time in the coming here stemming from our audit of two thousand eighteen. State board of accounts recommended that we look for a system for our financial in-payable that would be a little more user-friendly and efficient within our department. So we've been researching this and looking at it. Our current system is Skyward Financial In-Payable. Now, we have two separate systems at Skyward here, we have our Skyward student side and then we've got our financial in-payable. Skyward student not going anywhere at all at this time, so I'm just looking for the financial in-payable. We have a team together that came together from the business department and we've got some extracurricular bookkeepers on the team as well. And our assistant food service director from the food service department too, they all use the system. We've been meeting and interviewing vendors, we worked on a list of wants and needs that we need from a system. So we're looking for user function here, must be simplified and Windows-based system must have the ease of reporting, including preloaded canned Indiana reports and the ability to be flexible and create reports on our own as well in both PDF and Excel formats. We want approval flows for systems as far as like purchase orders and such and the ability for building users to view budgets and activity in the accounts. We also want customer service support, that's very important to us, that we pick up a phone or that we're able to put in a service ticket and we get response right away. And it's got, we're asking questions as to how many employees these software companies have to ensure that they can support our our customer service needs. We also want training support with that too, whether it's in person or videos or support other kind of means that we can, like a document on-demand training kind of stuff too. We're looking for an Indiana-based system. We're not looking for a system that's based outside of Indiana because India accounting is very specific here and it's not like other states. We are a cash-based system, we definitely have to have, right now, currently, we have an accrual system. It's a very different type of accounting, a very more, a deeper accounting system accrual is, but we're looking for a cash-based system, which is what Indiana is. So they have to have knowledge on that, they have to be able to flex between a calendar year budget and a fiscal year budget because that's one of the unique things that Indiana does is that we run our major fund budgets on calendar year and we run all of our grants on a fiscal year, which is a school year budget. So some we're, some systems in our current system is either one or the other and that is just not efficient for our department for running reports. And then the last thing is that we're looking for automation and integration of our processes. So we're looking for a time clock management system so we can get rid of our paper time cards and the process that we go through every payroll of counting hours and doing that at the building level to try and help our efficiency. So we're looking for an electronic time clock management system. And then we're also looking to bring our bookkeepers, the extracurricular accounts that are at the buildings, over to the same type of software. So those were all our goals in looking at systems. We took a look at all the systems that are in our region covering Lake County, La Porte, you know, all of our Porter County, all of them up here in Region One. We took a look at all the vendors that were in the area and we interviewed some of them. And so I hope to bring the results to you next meeting then. Yes, integration or conversion always comes at a cost. In the past, when we converted from R D S to Skyward, it cost us in the area of about a hundred thousand dollars to do so. I have budgeted for this, it's been planning for it since two thousand eighteen, so this is definitely a move that we've looked for. We're looking for the pricing to be similar as well at a monthly basis for our cost for software and licensing. So. When? Yeah, that's the big thing. We're looking to make a switch as soon as possible, probably this summer. Although I think we're going to miss our mark of actually being able to do this for a July one start, so it's probably going to be in more like August, September. But we'll be able to do all the front-end work of conversion ahead of time and then be able to test the system and put the system in August, September, sometime around then, so that we're we're smooth on that. When we switched to Skyward, we switched July one.
I remember when we did that.
And I really didn't like that because we, our first payroll was, I think, a July third. So and that was a, you know, July third was a Friday and a lot of banks had the holiday or we observed the holiday there. So it was scary that people weren't going to get paid. And and we did have some corrections and we had to come in on Monday and do a lot of that. We had, I think it was the second, if anyone had two direct deposit accounts, like they have a checking and then they have a saving, I think the second direct deposit didn't pull for a lot of those folks, so I did not like doing a July one start.
Have you already ordered it or?
Uh, no, I will bring a recommendation to you next month. Yeah, so I I wouldn't recommend doing a January one or a July one conversion, I'd like to do it off month. Get me into August and do that. Same thing with January, it's too scary to do it because you've got the holidays, you get year-end, we're too busy doing that kind of stuff. So we're looking to do it off month, like you said, in August, August, September, around there.
And how long you say the switch will take?
How long?
The switch will take?
The switch, it'll take us probably about two, three months as far as the conversion, yeah. Behind the scenes, you guys don't see any of that or employees won't see that, but my office will be working on it from April all the way to July, August until we get to the test point, yeah.
Long process?
Lot of work, lot of work, but we're up for it, we're up for it.
It'll pay off.
Mm-hmm.
That's the idea.
Yes, yes.
Next item is results of the e-learning parent survey, Jay.
No, actually.
Kevin.
So you saw me whispering to Kevin behind Dana's back. For some reason, my computer will not project, so Kevin is going to project for us. As you recall, we had a discussion about e-learning days versus traditional snow days and we've heard some feedback from the community that maybe we should reconsider. This survey went out to all of our families that have students in our school system. We received nearly eight hundred responses, which was like a great return rate.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, so it was a topic that people were in or. So that we take a moment to just share this information with you and tell you what we intend to do with the information. So as you can see, the first question there, well, first of all, we had good response from all grade bands. And then question one, for how much of the day is your child actively engaged in learning activities on an e-learning day? And so the ranges went from less than one hour all the way up to more than five hours. It looks like the sweep spots were twenty percent, which was an hour to two hour, and thirty percent came in from two to three hours and twenty-five percent anywhere from three to four hours. Question number two, how would you describe the amount of schoolwork assigned by your child's teacher during an e-learning day? The choices were too many assignments and work, just the right amount, or too few. Seventy-three percent said just the right amount of assignments. Question number three, how would you describe the level of schoolwork assigned by your child's teacher during an e-learning day? Either the work was too easy for my child, the work was just about right for my child, or the work was too hard for my child. Nearly eighty-five percent said the work was just about right for my child. Question four, how clear has the communication from your child's teacher been about expectations for an e-learning day? Confusing, somewhat clear, or very clear? Nearly sixty-six percent came back very clear with an additional thirty percent saying somewhat clear. Question five, does your child have access to a reliable internet connection and device on an e-learning day? And ninety-three percent indicated yes. Question six, on an e-learning day, does your child have access to an adult to work with and help answer questions about e-learning? Sixty-five percent said yes, twelve and a half percent said no, and twenty-two point five percent said my child is independent and does not require adult assistance. Question seven, during the last e-learning day, when did your child complete their work? On that day, or they utilized the three additional days, completed the work at school, or not sure? Nearly sixty-eight percent indicated on that e-learning day with an additional twenty-five percent saying they utilized the three additional days. Question eight, currently, if school must be called off four consecutive days in a row, the practice is to utilize e-learning for the first three days, but the fourth day would be made up at the end of the school year. So they had a choice between two statements. They could agree most with the current practice of three consecutive days of e-learning and making up the fourth day works best. Or they could agree with a change to two consecutive days of e-learning and making up three or more days works best. So sixty-seven percent said basically keep it the same. Three e-learning days and if it gets in this fourth day, make up the fourth day elsewhere in the calendar.
Well, they all like that an extra day on a year because of occasions and stuff.
Question nine, if makeup days are needed, please indicate which statement you agree with most. So the two options were makeup day should be tacked on to the end of the school year or makeup day should be built into the school calendar, such as going to school on President's Day if a day is needed for a makeup day. So as Mr. Ward just indicated, the majority said they'd rather have the day built in somewhere in the school year and not tacked on at the end. We've received approximately a hundred seventy-two free responses. I will tell you, they are very much dislike e-learning days, to we value e-learning days, keep them, it's the right way to go. There, one of the takeaways is what we could do better as a school corporation is providing better consistency amongst the three different elementary schools as well as the grade band. So that no matter who your teacher is at your particular grade band, you're going to get the same consistent amount of work to complete. For example, we saw an example where a parent responded, one fourth grader might have an hour of work whereas another fourth grader ended up having two and a half hours of work. Please strike for consistency amongst the school.
Sounds like a pretty little happy word, though.
Yeah.
Kind of all reasons.
Trying to just keep the system in place and make some adjustments for improvement.
Yeah.
One other thing to note with the way that the data was collected, because we broke it down by schools and we broke it down by grade levels, we're going to be able to give specific feedback to schools or to grades to say, this is what we're hearing from your parents, not just the data, but also some of that feedback. So if we saw some particular, you know, responses and the feedback that were concerning, we can make sure that's addressed directly to those folks that impacted that.
So the spokesperson over there, Jay, he's the one that framed out the initial survey, then we brought it to the board, made a few adjustments, we worked with the teachers' union and so that was the final survey that went out, so definitely a team effort.
Hopefully, without any response, we'll have some results.
Yeah. So.
Next item is discussion on bullying.
Yeah, I know there was a board member that wanted to put this discussion topic on the agenda and so we did and really don't know more. And so that's some discussion.
I just wanted to go over what the policies are, make sure that is there a problem in schools, do you hear things happen in middle school? You know, I don't have kids in this school anymore now and I don't, you know, as much, so just wanted to kind of get an update on that.
So we, if you recall, a while back at, I don't know how many board meetings ago, there were some parents who came to a board meeting indicating that we have a bullying problem and the schools aren't doing anything about it. That was kind of the gist. Well, we ran the bullying data at that time and came up with very few instances of bullying because bullying has one of those nuances where it's repeated over time. And that wasn't happening because school was was intervening and taking this on their action. So we then came to the conclusion that there are just kids being needy kids. And so that was identified as number one. There was a concern that we were not reporting all instances of physical assault or fighting to law enforcement. And so we met with parents, looked at our policy, looked at our practice and identified that we need to work with law enforcement and start identifying those guidelines and procedures of reporting those instances to law enforcement in a better way. So that was one good outcome of that. We are currently revising our handbook language and one of the community members that came to that board meeting is actually serving on the committee to take a look at the board policy. Knowing that we were coming into this meeting today with this on the table. Knowing that we were coming into this meeting today with this on the, uh, table, I looked at board policy regarding bullying and, uh, it's basically the same language that's in our handbook. So the, the first question is, are we following our policy? And the answer is yes. The two, the, the second item, there appears to be a perception out there that the school is not responding. I have yielded, um, some complaints that have hit my office that schools are not taking action and in reality that it's just simply not true. And have diverted those situations back to the middle school and, and again, it goes back to communication and educating. I think one of the areas that we can improve upon is communication. And taking the time to reach out to the parent that you don't believe really has been, their kid has been impacted, but what's happening is it's getting out of the community, a name is dropped. That parent finds out through the grapevine, hey, wait a minute, my kid maybe had something to do with this, calls the school upset, why didn't you call me? So there's a little bit of that.
Um, I think too that it could have kept happening to the same kid. And, you know, we had, uh, one lady, two ladies that day that come back and, you know, it was a racist thing and bullying thing. And, you know, she just claimed it kept happening, kept happening, you know, so I don't know.
So, um, behavior is an issue, not in just graphic schools, but in, when I speak to my colleagues in many circles, there's an uptick in this behavior. People are just being mean to other people, but that's reflected in our society. You, you, you see a mentality of, I'm not even gonna listen to you or try to even understand you. I'm just going to belittle you and downgrade you. We, that's not an excuse that we can just say, well, it's happening everywhere, let's do this. We can't do that. On April fourth, our new safety and security coordinator will be, uh, starting. And part of her initial charge is to do an assessment and pull all of the discipline data from the schools to find out what is the frequency, what are the high-ticket items, basically identify the problem areas. Are we, is it happening in the hallways? Is it happening in classes? Is it happening on the school bus, extracurricular activities? And then the golden one, social media.
Probably all of them.
And so which, where's the heart of the problem? Watch dry goodness. So that's step one. I also talked to another parent today, um, more along the side of, of the racial or ethnic bullying that might be happening. With the new safety coordinator, I want to task her with putting together a student survey. We've got some good data from our parent results. I think it's time, maybe we survey our kids about kids being mean, ridiculed, bullying, harassed, and see if we can drill down and get some valuable data that might give us some direction.
I think that's a interesting idea.
Do, when someone, when a kid complains about being bullied, is, is there a report taken and do they get tracked on?
Yeah, so typically, everything is shown in through the assistant principals for the teams at the lower levels and, um,
They have a database.
Yeah, we, we use Skyward. They document everything in Skyward, so here's the initial complaint, here's the outcome.
See the Z itself, continue it to certain kids.
Students can also anonymously put that information in as well and that's recorded directly to counselors at the middle school and high school.
So part of it's hearsay on social media. You get half the story or you don't know what the outcome is. That's not to dismiss that.
You know it's happening somewhere.
Yeah.
You know where you're gonna get through the school year without that happening. Is there, is there any information or statistic you can give, is there one that you have?
We, we will, we can circle back around in April once our coordinator begins and she can run the updated data and we can.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to question, so that and make sure that we're good.
It's an important topic.
I, I honestly haven't heard as much of that as we have in the past.
I talked to the middle school principal today and we've had a total of four fights this year and I found that to be low, actually. Like, you've only had four fights?
Yeah. Again, that is.
Especially when I had one days.
Especially in middle school.
So we won't let this topic die.
Yeah.
Just stay on top of it. It's important.
I appreciate it.
All right, uh, spring break is the week of March twenty-eighth. Our next meeting of the school board will be on Thursdays of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Let me, I rise to the board.
So. Amen hallelujah for spring break. Thank you. Thank you.